Good afternoon. I'd like to call the June 24, 2014 city council meeting to order. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please call a roll. Councilmember Francisco, Hart, Hotchkiss, Mario?
Here.
Rouse, White, Mayor Schneider?
Here.
Okay, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Public comment, I have two speaker slips here and two minutes up at the podium. We'll start with Phil Walker, be followed by Ethan Schenkman.
Hey, may I lead off today? Well, I'm alert today. Interesting article in the LA Times, "Officials urge Californians to prepare for wildfires." And you know, the more I walk around, I see desiccation, street trees to some degree, a lot of palms that have developed very extensive skirting on them, especially the Mexican fan palms. And having been here since and through the Coyote Sycamore fire and everything subsequent to that, you know, private property owners have to take the little bit longer step and look at their property and get some mitigation done because what your neighbor does or doesn't do can really put the squeeze on you too. And now we'll address the Edison problem. Okay, I happen to be having my car smogged at past on Gutierrez there and Salsa Poitiers. Ricardo does a great job. Give him a big plus. Okay, the Edison substation, I think they power a good portion of the south coast, down to the Rincon even. And you look at the utility poles, they're dried out. This pen, I actually buried it in a, probably a three-quarter inch crack at the base. And I remember when the one can came down in front of the Boys and Girls Club on Cannon Perdito there, probably sometime this past winter. They're dangerous and some of these poles are 65 to 85 foot in the air and they're triple canned. And you get a fire going and it's a big, big problem, the viability of the poles structurally. And I'm seeing it more and more. I'm seeing excavations adjacent to utility poles that are, they're exposing the grounding system, the ground rods, and they're not filled in in a timely manner and gardeners are complaining. So there's big concerns. And the one quick thing, the station fire, the DWP, LA DWP is being sued by 50 property owners and for lack of maintenance of the utility poles. So it's an ongoing concern and it's getting more concernable all the time. Thank you very much.
Ethan Schenkman?
Just coming in impromptu to thank you for allowing me to participate in dissipates a great deal amount of energy to represent the reincarnation of DO scores, paying pendants for past crimes and getting our mayor home safely. Okay? That was the purpose of my theme. I hope that was completely understood. As a version of critique to the event, however, you know, we all went through quite a bit of rigoromol. And not to have been received without lemonade, iced lemonade for the mayor doesn't say a whole lot for us when we got there. And I'd like to see that happen next time. For a, you don't understand, Kathy or Marilla, when we basically finished the procession of March, there was no one to receive the mayor with lemonade, hugs, confetti, maybe a Dutch bus where she could just, you know, kick back. And you know, Elena's not Barbara now, is she? And who's, and I'm glad I was able to call it and show you that you got back fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Solstice was a lot of fun, actually. That concludes public comment. We move on to the consent calendar. You have some items to read.
Item number two, adoption of ordinance for lease agreement with Machco Corporation, DBA Big Brand Tire. Recommendation that council adopt by reading a title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the airport director to execute a 15-year and five-month lease agreement with three-year, five-year options between Machco Corporation and California Corporation, DBA Big Brand Tire for 29,620 square feet of land, including 4,484 square feet of building 370 at 6010 Hollister Avenue at the Santa Barbara Airport effective July 10, 2014, for a monthly rental of $7,533 exclusive of utilities. Item number three, adoption of ordinance for police and fire service retirement plan of 1927 cost of living increase. Recommendation that council adopt by reading a title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara increasing the service retirement benefit for the Fire and Police Service Retirement Pension Fund. Item number four, introduction of ordinance for unrepresented safety managers salary plan amendment. Recommendation that Council A introduce and subsequently adopt by reading a title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending ordinance number 5587, the 2012 to 2015 salary plan applicable to certain unrepresented safety managers to provide for employee payment of per member contributions and offsetting salary increases. And B, adopt by reading a title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara for paying and reporting the value of employer-paid member contributions for unrepresented police management employees effective June 28, 2014.
Thank you. Without further preservations, we'll wait for the reading. Mr. Rouse?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to need to pull both item six and 11, please.
Okay. So we'll do that. And why don't we just do those separately? So item six is the downtown maintenance agreement for fiscal year 2015 and your reason for abstaining, I think you need to state.
I needed to abstain because I am a board member of the downtown organization.
Okay. So is there a motion for item six?
Don't move.
I have a discussion matter on this if I could.
Sure. Let's get a, is there a second on item six?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Hotchkiss?
I just wanted to be sure that in trying to observe good drought behavior, we don't cut things on State Street maintenance-wise to, so much to the bone that we start losing viability there vis-à-vis how attractive it looks. Because we say here that we only have spot treatment, cleaning of sidewalks only when there's a potential threat to health and safety. Original charge of the, to the DO was to make State Street safe and clean and maintain it that way. So I don't want to get that purpose lost with our drought consistencies.
Did you have a question or you just wanted to make that a statement? Okay, I think, well understood. So is a motion for item six, all in favor?
Aye.
And one abstention? And then could you read item 11, please? Yep.
Item 11, fiscal year 2015 waterfront fees resolution. Recommendation that council adopt by reading a title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara establishing waterfront harbor slip mooring and user fees for fiscal year 2015.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse and Mr. White?
Madam Mayor, I am a slip holder. So I have to abstain.
Likewise, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So is there a motion for item 11?
So moved.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Abstain.
To abstentions. Great. Any other items to pulled off the consent calendar or is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
There is, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Moved and, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. So on to item number 13.
Average unit size density incentive program review process.
Okay, we're back. Mr. Busk?
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider and council members. The purpose of today's hearing is to determine parameters for requiring planning commission review of AUD projects. As you know, AUD is the Average Unit Size Density Ordinance that was approved by the city council in July 2013 to implement general plant policies that encourage the development of smaller residential units at higher densities. As background, in September 2013, the city council expressed a desire to have the planning commission be more involved in the review of significant projects developing under the AUD program. Since September of last year, several meetings have been held to discuss the AUD review process. Most recently, the city council held the discussion on March 4, 2014, and the ordinance committee held a discussion on May 6, 2014. The direction that the city council gave at the, excuse me, March meeting was that any parameters for planning commission review would be applicable only to rental projects located in the high-density or priority housing overlay area and that it would be conceptual comments from the planning commission to the design review boards. What was not decided at that city council meeting was what project size would trigger this required planning commission review. The ordinance committee met in May to discuss what this trigger should be and concurred with staff's recommendation that a project lot size of 15,000 square feet or greater would be an appropriate trigger. And that trigger is the focus of today's meeting. Staff had recommended the 15,000 square foot lot size as the trigger, and so I wanted to quickly walk you through staff's thought process in making this recommendation. There are essentially two options to determine an appropriate trigger. You can either use the number of units in the project or the lot size. Staff recommended that lot size be used as the trigger because if the number of units were used as the trigger, then applicants may reduce the number of units in the project in order to avoid planning commission review. And that would be counter to the intent of the ordinance, which is to encourage increased So the next question was, what is the appropriate lot size to use as the trigger? Staff considered several different lot sizes, including 10,000 square feet, 15,000 square feet, and 20,000 square feet. Staff's recommendation was for 15,000 square foot project site. And in making this determination, staff wanted to choose a lot size that did not catch too many projects or too few projects. And so to help determine this, we did some research and found that approximately 50% of the lots are located in, or approximately 50%, of the lots in the high-density and priority housing overlay areas have lot sizes of greater than 15,000 square feet. Another consideration was that we wanted a lot size that was large enough to give the planning commission some opportunity to make insightful comments related to site design, building massing, and density as well. And we felt that 15,000 square feet was a lot size that did give them that opportunity to provide more useful feedback to the design review boards. Here we have some charts and tables to help inform this discussion today. As you can see in this table, when you look at high-density lots that are greater than 10,000 square feet, approximately 49% are, 15,000 square feet are greater. And that's shown by the three slices on this left-hand side of the pie chart. And interestingly, when we looked at lot sizes in the high-density areas that were identified as opportunity sites in the housing element, we also found that almost 50%, 46% of those lots were 15,000 square feet or greater. And that's also shown on the left-hand side of the pie chart. Here we have a graph that shows how many units could be constructed on lots of various sizes within each of the density ranges. The orange color is the medium-high density range. The red is the high-density range. And purple is the priority housing overlay range. If we were to take a 15,000 square foot lot as the example, under the AUD program, anywhere from five to 12 units could be developed on a lot in the high-density designation area. The identified density in the high-density area is 26 to, sorry, 28 to 36 dwelling units per acre. And as shown in the red, that would result in a desired density of nine to 12 units on a lot of 15,000 square feet. If we were to use the priority housing overlay densities, you could develop 12 to 21 lots or 12 to 21 units on a 15,000 square foot lot. So that means that staff anticipates that almost all of the projects that we see of 15,000 square feet or greater would have at least nine units, which is an appropriate number of units for a planning commission to be involved in the review process. And this slide shows what the proposed review process would be. The only changes from the current process would be that a PRT by the land development team would be required, and that's something that is optional but encouraged right now. And the other addition would be the requirement for planning commission review, which is shown by this step in the gold color. So in conclusion, following up on earlier feedback from the city council, staff recommends that planning commission concept review be required for AUD rental projects when the site is located in high-density or priority housing overlay area and the project site is 15,000 square feet or more. With respect to the next steps, if a supermajority of the city council supports this recommendation, then staff would prepare a draft ordinance to implement the change. This ordinance would be reviewed by the planning commission, the ordinance committee, and then the city council. If a supermajority of the council does not support the recommendation, then our current practice will continue, and that includes additional staff support to the design review boards and planning commission concept review only if the project is referred to the planning commission by the design review board. So this concludes staff's report, and I can answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Do you have any speaker slips on this? No. Just one quick question to start. If we go with the staff recommendation, projects under 15,000 square feet would still fall under the parameter if the design review board wanted it to go to PC, they could still do so. We're not eliminating that.
Madam Mayor and council, that is correct.
Okay. So it's just the requirement trigger. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What does this mean that the planning commission review would make a consensus recommendation? Could you please elaborate on that?
Councilmember White and city council, that's something that was mentioned, I believe, by a planning commissioner at the ordinance committee meeting. And there was feedback that just having individual comments from planning commissioners may not be helpful to the design review board. And so the thought was to have them come to more of a consensus recommendation to provide more cohesive feedback.
So does that mean, I mean, does that mean that everybody on the planning commission has to say the same thing? Or does it mean that a major, I mean, there's a motion and a second and all that kind of stuff, which would be the, what I would expect to, that would come to my mind as a vehicle for moving a project forward? As opposed to the concept review where people say, well, I want it, you know, not too big and not too small and kind of like that.
Yeah, councilmember White and councilmembers, that's what we are anticipating. The details haven't been worked out, and that's something that we would want discussed throughout the review process. But what you laid out is what we anticipate in terms of, it's not individual comments, but you have.
Motion and a second kind of thing. A resolution.
Right.
Thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. So can you describe what would happen if we don't have a supermajority today? So what is the status quo? What would happen? Projects can still be referred to the planning commission, correct? Either by the ABR or the Historic Landmarks Commission or if the applicant requested it. Is that right?
Madam Mayor and councilmember Mario, that is correct. The ABR currently can refer, ABR or HLC can refer any project to the planning commission if they feel it's appropriate. So that current status would continue if there's no supermajority decision today.
And we did hear from the public in the past, from the Mirasol project, that they thought that going through the design review board would be sufficient. Isn't that right?
Madam Mayor and councilmember Mario, that is correct. We heard that from that project developer.
Thank you.
We do have a public speaker on this, but if there's still any questions at this point, that's fine. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This won't be retroactive, correct? If we, when we put this in?
Madam Mayor and councilmember Hotchkiss, our intent was not to make it retroactive, but the final decision would be the city council on that. In terms of what the start date is, typically our ordinances would go into effect 30 days after adoption by the city council. And typically, we have a provision in that ordinance that explains what projects would be subject to it, whether it's a project that was deemed complete prior to adoption or if there's some other trigger that.
Well, I don't think it'd be fair if it was retroactive, but sort of changing the rules of the game in the middle of the game. But just to review a little bit, the reason that we want PC to take a look at this is, or at these sizes, is that they have skills and abilities beyond the ABR and the HLC, correct? Particularly in concerns traffic, for example.
Madam Mayor and councilmember Hotchkiss, that was some of the feedback that we've heard from city council members and also some planning commissioners.
Right.
We have also added staff level of support to assist the design review boards, however, so that they can address some of those issues and feel more comfortable addressing some of those issues in terms of site planning, which is something that they do with all projects.
But still as it is right now, if we sent this back to the planning commissioner, included the planning commissioner in this review process, the other boards could focus on what they're meant to focus on and not these additional matters.
Madam Mayor and councilmember Hotchkiss, the design review boards would still be the ones taking an action, but they would have this feedback on additional areas from the planning commission.
Right. Supplemental expertise from the PC. All right, thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Madam Mayor, my question also involves a comment, so maybe better to have the public comment first.
Sure. Just to clarify a little more with Mr. Hotchkiss, what Mr. Hotchkiss said about applications that are deemed complete, where exactly is that in the process? Is that prior to a conceptual review at the design review board? Is it in the middle of, you know, what, so 16,000 square foot, where, I guess, where on the timeline, I guess? What would that mean?
Madam Mayor and council, there are several dates that we could choose from, but I think we would most likely use just the date of application submittal because projects that go through design review don't have the same type of formal deeming complete that projects that go to planning commission will. So it would likely be on that first step, the project submittal.
Submitting a project, okay. And so, so at this point, depending on what happens today, anyone as of today or whenever the, 30 days after the ordinance is actually adopted, if there is one, anyone who submitted a project before that point would not be subject to the ordinance. But they could still be subject to the current process, which would be a possibility of being booted up to the PC if the design review boards wanted it to. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, yes, that is correct.
Okay, thanks. Lisa Plowman, come on up.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to take a minute to provide some feedback. I think the last time we were here at the council, there were, there was a majority of the council at that time thinking that the existing process was sufficient and was seeming to operate better than it originally started. I mean, think when the ABR and the HLC started to play this role and started to see bigger projects, there was some concern, there was some anxiety. And then as they started to get into it and got more staff support, I think they realized that they were capable of reviewing projects of the size of Mirasol. And I even initially was concerned about it. And our first letter that we wrote said we thought we should have a mandatory planning commission review for projects of a certain size. But I, at the last hearing, had backtracked from that point, seeing how much advancement had been made at those design committees and thinking that if there is an issue that needs planning commission input, there is the existing opportunity for that project to be moved up for that level of review. But if they don't need it, why have the extra step? It just takes more time and costs additional money for applicants that are in the process. So at this point in time, I think both myself and Dede Pikert and the other folks that had participated would support the current process rather than modifying it and amending the ordinance to require PC review. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public comment portion of this. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this came back before us because of, once we passed the concept and the ordinance, that there was some concern from stakeholders that as they saw these projects come to fruition, that there had not been a stakeholder review, i.e. traffic, circulation, parking, things that are over and above what ABR and HLC normally does. And the planning commission would have a greater community view of exactly what these projects meant. And in addition to that, PC also was one more place where a public hearing was going to be held. Not that people couldn't go to design review boards, but they don't tend to. And my fear personally was that we're going to start seeing most of these larger projects come back before council in review. And I think that was a waste of everybody's time and effort. So I think that's why we wanted to approach this and perhaps make a threshold that above a certain level, we could look at these projects from one more step. And once again, it's a consensus recommendation. It's not a drop-dead type of decision, but it is, it is an extra step. I understand that. But I think in these larger projects, it's definitely worthwhile. My question for staff was this, in the timeline, noting that we want to, you know, stay with the spirit of the ordinance, we want to not impede the process more than is totally necessary. But I was wondering about the order in terms of being the most user-friendly to the developer. The PC review comes down after the second conceptual design review. Is that the best and most efficient way to get as much information to the developer as possible? Or would it be better to be earlier in the process with those comments, were there traffic, circulation, and parking issues that came into play?
Madam Mayor and councilmember Rouse, it's something that is up for discussion. Either could be useful, depending on the situation. Our intention is that staff would have their review prior to planning commission review. And we think that in many cases, it would be helpful for that staff review to be provided to the design review boards prior to their second review because many of their questions might be answered and that might assist in informing the planning commission. But not necessarily. Perhaps some projects might not need that second concept review between the staff involvement and the planning commission review. So I think we would design some flexibility into the process in that respect.
Well, once again, what drives most developers, anybody trying to pull a permit nuts, is the uncertainty of what's going to go on and what board is going to say what. So given those kinds of comments, which are basic overview comments, I would personally think it might be better off earlier in the process to get as much information to the developer before spending the extra time, money, and effort on that furtherance of design after comments from the initial design review. You know, I'm not a developer, I don't know that, but that would make sense to me. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Well, I just, I think that Ms. Plowman said it very well, that the advisory committees have done a better job, have gotten up to speed, are doing an effective job. We're not hearing from the public that this is a huge pressing issue. There have been, you know, I must say that, you know, coming back on the council after my break, I'm struck by how few people are actually attending land use discussion hearings compared to days when the council chambers were packed. Folks were very engaged, were very concerned about these issues. So I understand that there are some people who are worried about this, but in context of history and time, this is really not a major pressing issue. And I personally think, again, going back to what I said previously, that this is a time and money issue, you know? And folks who are housing advocates are looking to try and streamline the process. And that was the intent of this effort, was to make this a little bit tinier, a tiny bit easier than it was previously. And I don't think that our system suffers from lack of rigorous review of projects. I think that the HLC and the landmarks, excuse me, the Architecture Board review members are absolutely capable of judging, you know, the quality of the design and taking all these other factors into consideration and judging a project. They have the assistance of staff now. Effectively, they're doing that job. I think it works out really well. It's almost a cross-training exercise for to have these review committees doing this work. So I personally come down, you know, on the side that we don't need to have the additional time, the additional expense, and the additional uncertainty of adding the planning commission into the mix. I respect the work that the planning commission does. Their agendas are full and they're busy too. I just don't think we need to have this extra step.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, like Mr. Hart, I was on, I was serving on the planning commission during the boom years while Mr. Hart was serving on council. And one of the big differences is that we're, this is not a boom. We have very few projects coming through at this point, and so, planning commission, nobody is as busy as they were in that sort of, in that era, late, the late 90s, I don't remember exactly when Mr. Hart's time was there. But I come down on the other side of that, of this question, where I think that, I think of the measure twice, cut once theory with this. Also that we have trained, I think Mr. Hodgkiss's point about training planning commissioners to make the tough calls and get a host of input from a variety of our staff and of experts, is embedded in their work week in and week out. So, and I also, when you look at the timeframe that it takes to bring a project through from inception to fruition, coming to planning commission on this level is, where it's not going to come back and back and back, but it's getting a motion in a second of a pod of information, is not going to add significantly to, when you look at the full length of time it takes and the full cost, great cost. I agree with you, Mr. Hart, it is an expensive process and time-consuming, but this doesn't add much to it from my perspective. And I think there's a lot of value added to it. And another element is the AUD, how we were able to get an AUD approved by a council that was, had, was fairly similar to this makeup, was, this is a test, that this is a quote-unquote experiment. Some of us feel stronger than that, that this is the way of the future, and this is what we must do for the benefit of the city going forward. But our agreement is, for 250 units, eight years, let's see how it works. And then the adaptive management process of looking and seeing how we're doing. How are these 250 units? How are these eight years? Are we, is this a successful venture? And so I want that, I want this to be successful. There are skeptics amongst us here who are, you know, reluctant to go there, and our process is one of saying, okay, here's a fair deal, here's a reasonable package to look at and see how it works. So I want this to be a success, and I think that the planning commission will help us be successful. We saw the two projects, which weren't AUD projects, but they were rental projects, come forward and they came on appeal to council, rather than, you know, the hope would be, they go to planning commission, they get vetted out, perhaps a little harder, might get story polls, and the community gets a chance. I mean, there's going to be some, I think there's some surprise, I'm hearing a bit of surprise on the one project, the rental project that's going up now. I think there's going to be some surprise even on, and I've supported both of these projects, the Haley Street project, I think there's going to be some feedback on that. So for, that's a scenic route for me to be saying that I support, I thought this is a pretty good compromise for projects being vetted at the 15,000 square foot level, that's a pretty good-sized parcel for the city of Santa Barbara, and a pretty good-sized project. So I like this compromise, I appreciate the ordinance committees bringing that forward. And my approach is more one, I want the AUD process to work, I want it to be successful over the next, and that there be buy-in by a broad range of our, the philosophies that sit up here into the process long-term. So that's the reason for my support. I thought Mr. Rouse's questions were interesting about where in this process the planning commission review should occur. I think this works. The nice thing about conceptual review is, it's not working drawings. It's, that's where the cost balloons up yet another bump, when you start doing full civil engineering and so forth and so on. This, I could see this being a, here's a concept, okay. I remember, for example, one disaster, I think Mr. Hart was on council at this time, the project down on Yano, we'll call them the Yano condos. And they first came in as corrugated iron, corrugated, yeah, and it was like, everybody went, no, you know? And then he came back with the stucco and tile and the beautiful project that they have there now. And so that was a second concept review, and it was a successful use of that, whereas somebody didn't have to do working drawings and all that, they got to try something and then get steered right. So that's, that would be the approach that would, that would work for me here. Thank you.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Mr. White's comments. I think that the planning commission agreed to a correct compromise here in advocating that this not be, that the planning commission approval not be an appealable approval. That would be, I could see how that would introduce delay. I think that, I think that these projects are of sufficient size that they need planning commission review, and I believe that this will, this will help the process along. I think that we would see a lot of appeals without this, because regardless of whether you're for or against much denser housing in Santa Barbara, these projects, many of them are going to be quite large and quite obtrusive in the neighborhoods where they're going up. So I think the planning commission approval of a project like this, planning commission advice on the design will give us an added assurance of actually getting the project through in a way that doesn't completely discomfort the community. So I'll support this recommendation.
Mr. Francisco said something, I just want clarification. So the way this process would work is after the PC conceptual or commission review, that's not an appealable issue to council, it's only after project design approval, that's where the, an appeal process could happen?
Madam Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hodgkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I listened with, really carefully to what Mr. White has to say because of his past experience much greater than mine in this area, and I'm appreciative of what you said. I would also, I think, recall that Paul Zink of the ABR, when he was here, said that this really could be helpful. He was speaking as an individual, not as representing the ABR, but, and speaking on behalf of the public, I do think that people are concerned with the development of our city, and if there's an additional process, yes, it does take a little bit longer for sure, but let's give it to the guys with the most experience, which is the planning commission, and at least let them take a shot at it so that ultimately we save time and effort. Thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support the status quo. I think the AUD program was developed to encourage smaller units and a more compact design, and I do appreciate Councilmember White's goals. I'm cynical enough, though, to believe that some other of us up here would just like to make it really hard to build affordable, compact housing. So I'd like to move that we stay with things the way they are.
Second?
Second. Okay, well, there's a motion on the table. I will, let me speak, well, to the issue which relates to the motion. The last time this came about, I was very much on the fence, and I think, to me, it was looking at how many projects would have to go through this process. And this was very helpful, looking at the lot sizes and how many we're talking about, and this 15,000 square foot trigger makes a lot of sense to me. I frankly think that any project that's going to be 15,000 square feet or more, or that size of a lot, will most likely be triggered up to the planning commission, or there'll be issues related to circulation and other things that if it's not at PC, it might end up, appear in a more confrontational way, as opposed to just going through the process the normal route that we all hope. It's kind of reminds me a little bit, although it's very different with single-family homes, that the, when we go 80% above the FAR with the neighborhood preservation ordinance, there's extra things they need to do, and that has proven to work very well in terms of lack of appeals because of the extra public process involved and the input from the community. So even though this is dealing with a multi-unit, big, much bigger project, it has the same kind of flavor to me. Had it been down to the 10,000 square feet, I think I would not approve that, but I think this is, looking at the number of units, number of lots we're looking at in the opportunity sites, it seems to make sense to me. So, Mr. Rouse, did you have a question or a comment?
A comment on the motion, I, you know, it's kind of hard to swallow the, my colleagues' conspiracy theory about wanting to submarine this process when in fact we were the ones that passed the process in the first place, or the concept and the ordinance. It's not about what we do or we don't want, it's about what's appropriate for the community. And this step allows greater community input into larger projects. That's what this is all about and nothing more.
Mr. White?
Well, Madam Mayor, I'm seeing we may have a, an opportunity to get something passed here, but, so is the process then to have a substitute motion and to move the staff recommendation, is that...
We, I mean, we, there's a motion on the table, we can have a vote, I have a feeling it's not going to pass, and then we can have another motion. I mean, but unless, Mr. Cologne?
Madam Mayor, a substitute motion would be in order if Councilmember White so desires.
Then I would make a substitute motion that the council approve the staff recommendation.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay. Anything to the motion?
I like my motion better.
Okay.
So now, we're not voting on mine and Hart's? Okay, so that's...
That's a substitute motion, so if this passes, then that passes. Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ready to vote? Okay. We know what the substitute motion is, it's basically passing the staff recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, I heard a five-two, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that passes. So what's your timeline, you think, in terms of coming back with an ordinance?
Madam Mayor, I think we, with our first step being to go to the planning commission with a draft ordinance, we could probably do that in the next two months, I'm looking at the city attorney.
Fall?
Then, yes, I think fall, we're almost in July, probably, yes, October, November, before council would see it.
Okay. And perhaps offline, it'd be nice to get a list of applications you've received thus far that are in these opportunity sites, just to see what would not be part, we're not looking at retroactivity here, but it'd be good to know what kind of activity is actually happening. So appreciate that. Okay. With that, we move on to item number 14.
Stage two drought update.
Mr. Hagmark, I think we've seen you most of all, of any staff member, except for maybe Mr. Armstrong sitting right there, but welcome back, thank you for the update.
I'll take that as a compliment.
It's a good thing.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council. My name is Joshua Hagmark, I'm the Acting Water Resources Manager. I'm here today to give another update on the current drought situation. To start off my overview, we have, I'm going to talk a little bit about our water supply outlook, talk about some tools for influencing water use, supplemental water, where we stand with our procurement of supplemental water, drought response, capital projects, and our conservation efforts. I do have to say, I have Madeline Ward with me today, the Acting Conservation Specialist, so she'll be here to walk you through the conservation efforts. So I want to start off with talking a little about El Nino cycle. I seem to be getting a lot of questions from the public, and other coworkers are as well, and so I assumed you might be receiving some similar comments. El Nino does not necessarily equate to increased rainfall. It's been one of the things people are like, oh, we don't need to worry about conserving, it's, they're predicting El Nino for next year. And I just wanted to take a little of the time to talk a little about that, because that is, there's not a correlation at this point between, if you get an El Nino, you will get rain. That's not, that's not what the experts are saying on this. If we do get rain, El Nino will, has shown to increase the amount of rainfall. The challenge with the last few years, and the reason it's been unprecedentedly dry, is because we've had a high pressure sitting off the coast, pushing the storms around us. So whether we have an El Nino or not, if the storms aren't coming through, there is no rainfall to help improve the situation. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that, and hopefully can cut down on some of the questions I keep getting about that. And I think we have to hope for the best and prepare for the worst, is kind of the motto here, and that's where I'm taking you today. So here's our current supply strategy, which I show every, every month here, and we're focused on year three, 2014, is where we are now. We have been challenged by some of our groundwater wells, and I'll be talking about that a little later in the program. So you're seeing some supplemental water programmed for this year, about 300 acre-feet that we're planning to use this year. Our conservation, extraordinary conservation that we're looking for, as you heard a week ago, we are challenged, the public is being challenged by meeting that goal. We're hopeful that the rates going into effect in July for water use in June will help, help people to meet that goal. Let's see, I'll talk a little bit more about, later in my presentation, about the supplemental waters as well. So monthly demands, as I reported a few weeks ago, the data came in for May, and it was unfortunate, but the data showed that water usage matched what we would expect in a normal year. What I kind of wanted to share with the council in this presentation is, I included the gray bar there. The gray illustrates last year's water usage. And I think what's important, if you look at March, April, and May, if I compare last year's water usage to this year's water usage, the community is making progress. If we look at March, it was 20% below last year's water usage. For April, it was like 10, and for May, it was 5%. The challenge is, we are in an unprecedentedly dry situation, and our current target is to get 20% below our normal water usage. And you can kind of see, it kind of bounces around with last year's water usage, and that's why we didn't come out and say we want to be 30% below last year's water usage. Our water planning, our predictions, were all based on some normalized usage, which is a running average of the city's water usage. And so that's why when we're talking about the need, it's getting 20% below that, and I know that can be kind of confusing, people's water bills show their water usage from last year, and so on their bills, people may, hey, I'm making progress, and that may be true, but we're asking, this is extraordinary times, we're asking people to look and see how that water usage, are they really truly making headway versus their, their normal usage? And if they have questions, we're more than happy to entertain those questions, call our hotline or visit us on the web. So if they're, in summary here, what I kind of wanted to do is, is kind of talk about the space between the normalized water usage and the red line, so the dotted green line and the red line there, that percentage of savings so far equates to approximately 164 acre-feet is what has been saved so far. Our goal at this time was approximately 700 acre-feet. So we're 500, 550 acre-feet shy of our goal, but I'm hopeful with continued communication, the rates going into effect, we will start to see some change in usage, and we have our biggest opportunity for change coming into these months when our water usage is so high. This graphic here shows just where the water is used. I often, talking to folks, they talk about, well, it's the other guy who's the problem. And what I kind of wanted to point out here, as much water as folks we do use in our parks and recreation and schools, it is a small, small percentage of the overall city's water usage. And really, where the water is, is in the single-family residential homes, that's where this community... That's where this community can save the most amount of water. This year, our target is to save 1,000 acre-feet, and that is, that is where we hope most of that savings will come from, as we move forward. So it's tools for influencing water usage, aside from conservation, which is obviously a huge tool that we use. We have regulations, which, we were adopted, the stage two regulations on May 20th, rates, which were adopted on June 17th and take effect July 1st, and penalties, which some agencies have already implemented, but we wanted to bring those up and talk a little about those today. So, the purpose for the penalties would be to address the high-water users in the community. And currently, the attorneys of office is investigating the legal requirements for that. What, and what we intend to do is come back and do more of a formal presentation as part of the drought update next time around. And we'll walk, walk through what that process would look like and the timing. In general, we don't see the penalties being, being implemented any earlier than September, but we're working on that process, and we'll bring that back to you for more discussion. We're also working on a framework for who, who might these rates target, and how much of an impact it would actually make. That's, and so, we hope to come back to both Water Commission and Council and get some feedback and input on that, before getting any, getting too far along with that. So supplemental water, I think I've reported before, we do have 1,148 acres of secured water from Vandenberg. We are currently under contract with Biggs West Gridley for 1,300 acre-feet. That water will be delivered in July, August, and September. So come October, we should know what our full tally is of that percentage. Unsecured, but we're in discussion on, is Mojave Water Agency has water in San Luis Reservoir, that they have put up for a unbalanced exchange. And so, Montecito, Lacumbre Water District, and ourselves are interested in, it's around 1,000 acre-feet, so when you split it out, it's about 500 for, for the city. Still, still in negotiations on that, I don't have a lot of details, but once I do, I will bring that back. And if that does go through, that could be moved up into the secured.
Can you define unbalanced water exchange?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. Madam Mayor, the unbalanced water exchanges, we would, Mojave is interested in giving us one gallon of water, we have to pay them back two and a quarter gallons of water within a, right now, the discussion is a 10-year period in which we would return that water. And so, in a typical year, water is about $250, $280 an acre-foot. We could use, if we have full reservoirs, we could use our Table A, our state water allocation, to repay that. There are several ways that we could repay that, but we definitely would keep it out at a 10-year repayment. I don't think we'd want to repay it any sooner than that, I think that'd be too...
In other words, repay it when it costs less than today, for example?
Absolutely, absolutely. And Mojave is all about banking water, so they have a lot of groundwater banking, and so this is how they kind of keep moving water around. And then, of course, we have our banked water at Dudley Ridge, that's water that we've stored there, and could have returned, and we're working on the terms of that return. Lake Kachuma entitlement, there are some questions about what was happening with Lake Kachuma, and right now, I am happy to say there is consensus amongst all the water agencies along the south coast, that we will be taking a 55% reduction in our water year 15 allocation. That allocation is typically, for the city, it's 8,277 acre-feet, so for us, it'll be a little over 3,700 acre-feet for next year. And that is already factored into the supply strategy that I shared with you initially. Drought response, capital projects, I want to be going through recycled water system, groundwater projects, desalination plant, and the comb pumping project. So the tertiary treatment plant, it is under construction, and scheduled is still to be online by the summer of 2015. We are making progress with the Valverde well, that was a, in a groundwater basin we currently do not pump from. It has some difficult water, and so, a good candidate to put it into our recycled water system. That project is supposed to be producing water by October, and it looks to be about 300 acre-feet a year, which, to put it in perspective, our recycled water demand is about 1,100 acre-feet a year. 300, that is the plant itself, the wastewater treatment plant uses recycled water for a lot of its process cleaning. And so, we are working on a project to reduce that by 300 acre-feet, which would get us down to a 900 acre-foot demand of the recycled water system. With Valverde online, that would reduce that discrepancy to 600 acre-feet, until we can get the tertiary treatment plant online.
We have a question, Ms. Mario.
Is there any way to speed up the project on the tertiary treatment plant? It seems like if we had that supply online faster, that it would help a lot.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, yes, we were very interested in speeding that up. We put some pretty good incentive clauses in there for the contractor to finish early. So, we've expedited a lot of the, we tried to organize that construction, so it moves pretty quickly. The real driver in there is the procurement of some of these, of the pieces of equipment, and so that's kind of the driver. But we've, we've got an incentive clause in there, we feel like we've pushed this project as fast as it can, and so I think we're looking to, the bulk of our water for recycled is used in the summer, so our target is to, to be up and running by then.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
So how does the plumbing work for the Valverde well? Do you just plug that into the reclaimed system with extra pumps? Is that, then it charges the system from a different location than the treatment plant?
Right. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, that's exactly right. We're very fortunate, there is already a recycled water main that runs out to the Hidden Valley area, right in front of this well. And so, we'll be able to tie that in with just pretty minimal construction there, and feed, backfeed the zone from the top, which will really help out, I think, for, just in general operations, help out with feeding the eelings and the golf course.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So groundwater project highlights, I just put this on here in case you guys have any questions about wells. We do have a lot of different projects going on with wells. We continue to be inspecting and maintaining a lot of our wells, trying to maximize the production out of those. Alameda wells, you know, we've, moving forward with design on that, we have located a site, and we're working with parks, so we've now defined exactly where the new well would go. So we're going to be moving forward with creating some drawings, and moving forward with the findings necessary to move forward with construction on that. The goal with that project is to be in production by next summer. It's a pretty aggressive schedule, we're hoping to keep. Ice School well, for those who may not be familiar with the history, this was drilled about 10 years ago, really difficult water quality unfortunately, lots of H2S, and, and the production out of it was about 300, 400 acre-feet a year. And the challenge with that was, really to deal with that water, it needed a treatment plant, or it needed to be piped to the Ortega Groundwater Treatment Plant, which had about a three-quarters of a million-dollar price tag on it, which at the time, not being in a drought, it was a low, lower priority. We're now looking at it, we're conducting water quality testing, we're wondering if we pump this well, a couple things. We wonder if we pump this well at a lower pumping rate, could we put it right into the system? Sometimes when you pump wells at different rates, you pull out less of the H2S that might be trapped in the groundwater. So we're going to look and see if there's a simple solution where we can tie it right in, and not have to do a lot of treatment. However, if we're finding that that's not going to be possible, we are also moving forward with the design to pipe that water down to the Ortega Groundwater Treatment Plant. The Veracruz well is currently in operation. I haven't actually received any complaints. We are running it through the filters twice, because the H2S is so high from that well, but we are getting production out of it, and that is going in the system, and I've been really impressed with the, the treatment of the plant, because it's some pretty poor quality water coming out of the ground. So, I think we're just making some good headway on that. And the City Hall well, you might have saw the last Tuesday, unfortunate timing with that, last Tuesday, we had part of the parking lot closed, so we could pull this well, we did have a failure of this well, we're still investigating why it failed, there's more work that still needs to be done. This, as, to this point, we believe this is under warranty, this is one of the wells that was just recently installed, the pump was, and so, we're going to get to the bottom of that and get some answers, so we can get this thing back online as soon as possible.
Mr. Hart? Go ahead.
Just going back just a second, you, you mentioned the, the quality of the Veracruz, how is that compared to the High School well, quality? Are they comparable, or one worse than the other?
Councilmember Hart, very comparable water.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just...
So the workaround with the additional...
Ultimately, you know, to say it, it meets all, we can get it to meet all primary drinking water standards. It will, it's safe to drink, it's just secondary standards, such as odor and things, are kind of offensive, and we're trying to deal with those, so we, we don't have any issues.
So the workaround that you're doing to improve the quality by running it through the filtration plant twice, will that be affected? If you, if you have this additional quantity coming from Veracruz, is that going to mess up that approach? Will that still be effective?
It's certainly going to be challenging. The, the key has been in the past to mix it, so when we had City Hall, City Hall happens to have some decent water quality, so it was great, we'd just mix it with Veracruz, and it would allow us to go through the treatment process once. Because it's just Veracruz water, we're having to actually go through the filters twice to make sure we can really cut down that H2S.
It really depends on the City Hall well as, as well?
Yes, and that, and we're, I didn't have it on here, because there really isn't any new news, but the Corp Yard well, that's one that we drilled last year, and we're placing the pump right now, and trying to get that online. That, the initial testing shows that, that water's going to be really high quality.
Okay, well, that's good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So, just wanted to start off with just the general timing of desalination, where we are. We have, we are in year three, we had just awarded the pre-design contract, we are working through that contract. Our goal is to be prepared to award a contract in, by April of 2015, should conditions continue. On that timeline, the desalination facility should come on sometime in mid to late 2016, which would meet our critical demand in year 2017. So with the desalination plant, with the coastal development permit, we had some fairly good news last week. We received a letter from the Coastal Commission, recognizing the existence of our current coastal development permit, and kind of laying out some steps for what we need as we move through this process of reactivation. Basically, we need to get an amendment or a permit specifically for the, the act of placing our equipment back in the ocean, which is a fairly straightforward permit, as we understand, talking to Coastal Commission staff. So we're working with putting together what exactly would be involved in the action of placing that equipment, and we'll be getting that to, hopefully, to Coastal Commission staff later in July. The NPDS permit renewal, as we've talked to...
Question, please?
Mm-hmm.
So didn't that letter also refer to a policy report that's coming out soon? What's it called, Mr. Hagmark? The Ocean Plan Policy, which may challenge the, the way we do our intake on the desal plant?
Now, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rio, Rio, the, that's exactly what falls into the NPDS permit. So the changes that are underway is, the state is, State Water Resource Control Board is amending the Ocean Plan to, now, instead of just focusing on discharge, which is, at this point, has been related to our NPDS permit for El Estero Wastewater Treatment Plant, which included discharge of brine. It's, they're expanding that permit now to include intakes for desalination facilities. And we met with staff this week, we have not seen a copy, but the staff at the Regional Water Quality Control Board have seen a copy of the draft comments, or draft Ocean Plan Amendment changes. And we're generally just talking about the timing, because our permit for NPDS permit expires in May of 2015. And so, we are going to be working to put together the information that they're going to be, need to, to, at this point, we're all kind of guessing, but at this point, what they, we think they're going to need in order to give us a new, a renewal, permit renewal. So, at this point, I wanted to let the council know, next week, we will be bringing a contract for legal support on the NPDS, just because there are so many, we do this every five years, that there's so many variables associated with this permit renewal, that we are looking to have a firm who's familiar with these renewals help us out, particularly given the the desal component. Consultant progress, I just want to take a little time to talk about the ocean intake facility. It's often referred to, and I have referred to it as an open ocean intake. This is not a pipe, it's just open pipe in the, in the ocean. It, it is actually a, a screened facility. The technology that we are looking at right now is called wedge wire screen technology. It has been used at several other facilities as kind of a pilot to see how it works, and it has been very successful. This facility keeps fish from getting, larger fish from getting sucked into the pipe, and it also, the velocities through this screen are so low that fish can escape, easily escape the, the intake velocities. So it's really important, this, this mesh is .5 millimeters, it's a really tight mesh, probably equivalent to a screen on your screen windows. It's a really tight mesh, meant to keep the bulk of marine life out of, out of the pumps and out of the desal facility. So I just want to talk about that, I've had quite a few questions from the public, "Well, why is this just big open pipe? Why don't you put something on the end?" Yes, we certainly are planning to put something on the end, we certainly are, it's important that we protect the marine environment. As far as land side...
Ms. Mario has a question.
So you, you're characterizing the screen as very successful. Are you going to provide to us some reports or evidence of that? I mean, I've heard the, the other way, that you can screen it, but it's still going to destroy some of the marine life, that some of them are going to get sucked through there. So I'm very concerned about seeing evidence of what you're saying, okay?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rio, we are planning to do an update to council on the status of the pre-design work in September, and with that, we'll have the design engineers here to talk about that, and the studies that have been done. Again, we're going to be implementing this in compliance with state conditions or state requirements on this, so the, the, we can talk some more about what the screens do and don't do.
Well, September seems a little ways away. Can you make it sooner?
I think you'll have the information you need to give an accurate report by then, is that...
Okay, we should have our, you know, we should be talking about it and focusing on it before September. Thank you.
I'm not quite sure when that could be, considering we're off for three weeks in August, and to get the information you want, Ms. Mario, I think we need the people, the experts involved with the details in order to provide the information, and we're not making any decision on a contract with desal plant until next spring, if, depending on what happens with, in the winter. So I want to hear the information too, but I just don't want to have a meeting just for, just by, just to have a meeting with inadequate information, so...
Okay, understood.
Yeah.
As far as land side activities, we continue to, to move forward with evaluation of the whole electrical system, what modules will be, needed to be placed on the facility. We're looking to get a rough cost estimate by the end of July, and so I'll be working with that information. One of the things that we'll be coming back to council with is a contract with RefTelis again, they were our rate model firm, and we'll be coming back with a contract to take that data from the costs of desal, so that in September, my goal is to present a, a range of costs that we might see for our low, average, and, and high users, how those costs of implementing desal might impact our, our ratepayers. So, as I mentioned, update coming in September, looking to support the rates for that, and the key for this, this is an interesting one, we're, we've got to get these rates in place, because part of the, the, the rate structure needs to finance the desalination facility. So if we want to award a contract, or want the opportunity to award a contract in April, we need to have a rate structure that's in place. At this point, we're, we're working on the details, but we're thinking a rate structure that's in place by possibly February. So backing that out, we've got a lot of work to do in, in developing those, that rate structure that will support desal, and also doing the 218 noticing, and, and going through all the public hearings. So, we're building that schedule right now, and we, we hope to share that with you next go-around, what that's going to kind of look like. And then, as I mentioned, headed towards a release of a proposal for the design build...
Excuse me if I could, just a moment. When you do that rate structure, could we call...
When you do that rate structure, could we call out as a line item, desalination escalation or something? In other words, so people don't just see a big hit on their bill, but see specifically what part is going towards the coming desalination plan?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hodgskis, this increase at this time, we're still looking at it, but will be all desalination. That's what the increase will be because Prop 218 requires that the increase all be associated with the cost of service. And so at this point, the cost of service, the significant cost in service will be desalination. And so one of the things that we'll be looking for input from Water Commission and Council is part of that, there's a capital component of desalination. And then there's an operational cost. And we'd like to talk a lot about the capital cost being close to $30 million, but what quickly dwarfs that is the actual operational cost. And so that's why I hope to bring back a lot of those numbers and boil that down to what, what it's going to mean to our ratepayers.
I was just thinking from the public's point of view for support for this, that we would be successful or more successful if we could say, "Hey, this chunk of your dollars is going for this specific purpose."
Okay. We have another, other questions, Mr. Hart and then Mr. White.
So I just want to make sure I understood. You're anticipating that we're going to have to raise rates before we make the decision to go forward with the desalination plant in order to keep the option open that we could make the decision about the desalination plant?
Councilmember Hart, yeah, there's quite a few critical steps as we move forward with this. Yeah, last year it was the NOAA predictions. We're pretty good about predicting how dry it was going to be, but we're going to get to a point where we're certainly going to have to be talking about rate increases and noticing the public. We may not increase it. That will try to push it off as long as we can, but at some point, we're going to need to implement the rates so that they will allow us to secure the funding in order to award the contract. And so it is going to be a pretty active conversation. We're going to be looking a lot at what the weather predictions are. We should have a pretty good idea of where we are come January next year, if it was, if it looked anything like this year.
And just to kind of clarify how it works is, we expect that we will have to borrow money to build the desalinization plant. And that means we'll either borrow money from the state through the revolving loan fund or through selling bonds. And in either of those cases, the people who are, we're going to borrow the money from are going to want to make sure that we have the revenue to then make the payments. And so what we anticipate is, is we have, because of the Prop 218 noticing and everything, we'll need to have those rates ready, already approved by the city council and ready to go before we sell the bonds or borrow the money. Now, the idea would be, we will wait to last possible moment, but we want to make sure that you've already approved them so if we then have to award that contract. And so the timing, obviously, we don't want to raise rates if we don't have to, but we also need to make sure that we don't get in a situation where we sell bonds and then you haven't done the final approval that could be subject to a challenge before that happens because then we wouldn't be able to sell the bonds. So that's that, the timing of it.
Well, that's really helpful. That explains it much better. So there is a scenario where we raise the rates or we give notice to the public, go through the process of having a council hearing to set the rates, but the trigger date for when the rates actually would increase is coincidental with the decision point when we would move forward with the desalination.
That would be our plan.
That's the best case scenario.
Assuming we can get all the legal stuff set.
Right, okay, thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, there's another piece to it though, and that is that we are now not in full cost recovery with our rates. And so presumably, that can't last very long. And that even if we were to implement only a portion that's going to, and I think it speaks to Mr. Hodgskis's questions too, where there's a piece of this which will, which will just be, we're accomplishing full cost recovery next year, whereas we're actually, might call it deficit spending, we're going into reserves this year with our rate structure. And we can't do that anymore. So that would be a piece of it that would be different than the desalination piece. And that would be, we might be able to separate that out and show that as, as we contemplate how we're financing the system next year.
Well, and to follow up on that, I think also if we sell the bonds to build the desalination plant, to rebuild the desalination plant, we rebuild the desalination plant and then it rains and we don't need to operate the desalination plant, we still have to pay the bonds back. So I like the idea of, on the billing statement and the water statement, to have a line item about desalination capital and maybe even desalination operational. So, you know, a year later, let's say, the desalination plant's not in operations, they're wondering, "Well, why are my water rates so high still?" Well, it's because we had to rebuild it and yay, it rained, that's good news, so you're not paying more for the operating of the desalination plant. But I think that's been part of the challenge we've had this time around about, you know, why are you waiting so long for the desalination plant? And when they, if they actually see every month the dollars that they're spending that's just for the capital part of the desalination plant, it's that part of that constant education that you were talking about before. I mean, that's all logistics on how it looks on your water bill, but, but I appreciate the thought process behind that. Yeah, thanks.
One of the things, just to kind of add to the discussion, you know, a lot of folks talk about, "We'll turn it on so we can get past, is we don't have to deal with this drought." And that this, the desalination facility will not end the drought. It will still require conservation. It is not a solution that will, we can all return to using our 14,000 acre feet a year. This, it will still require discipline and extraordinary conservation even when that facility is operating in these current conditions. So I just wanted to cap on the, recap on the comb pumping project. They're moving forward quickly on that project. They had a significant shutdown last week of the comb pipeline in order to make some significant changes to the intake structure. The water is now moving again through that facility. It was successful. They finished it on Sunday. The cost for the whole project right now is 6.1 million and that includes operation of the facility through February of 2015. The city's portion is 2.2 million. And I think the update that I wanted to share with you is we are seeking grant funding. There's two possible funding sources. One is through the IRWIMP or Integrated Regional Water Management Program. And the other one is, the California Department of Public Health has a grant available as well. So we're pursuing both of those, hoping to try and minimize our expenses on this emergency project. So at this point, I will turn it over to Madeline.
Mr. Hart has a question first.
There was also an article in the news press this morning about undercharging for water services and the potential liability that is for all the customers. Is that, that must be news to you as well? And can you give us some more information about that?
Thank you, Councilmember Hart, for bringing that up. I had it in my presentation, so I skipped over it. I meant to talk to you about it. The CCWA was put on notice by the Department of Water Resources that they have been undercharging for transportation costs associated with water. And oh, by the way, CCWA, we'd like $7 million from you for costs related to last year and this year. The city's portion of that, we pay 7% of those costs, is approximately $500,000. That would be our share. I don't have much more details than what was in the paper. I'm looking forward to our CCWA meeting next week where hopefully we can dig into some more details about that.
Well, that share, that percentage share is very helpful. I had no, I was looking at this share of the 2.2 million out of the $6 million cost and was imagining a similar ratio for this cost. It's a much better scenario at a $500,000 cost than a $2.5 or a $3 million cost.
And to put that into context too, our, right now, our annual cost for state water is about $4 million. And a large part of that is the capital cost of the South Coast branch that had to be put in. And that, payments for that will be done in 2023, I believe. And then that payment will drop, but it'd be $500,000 in respect to our $4 million that we're paying them on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Francisco.
You know, just to put this in perspective, as long as I've been the city's representative on the Central Coast Water Authority, we have had repeated problems with accounting at the Department of Water Resources. It's mind-boggling to me that a state agency could be that far off this consistently. But this is nothing new. Undercharges, overcharges, this is very, very typical.
Feel better or? Thank you, Mr. Francisco.
There have been some undercharges too. We didn't talk about those.
Oh, okay, all right. Did we get a rebate?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, well, okay. All right, please continue.
Madam Mayor, council, members of the council, my name's Madeline Ward. I'm the Acting Water Conservation Coordinator. And at the end of our drought updates, we usually have a couple of slides about conservation, so I look forward to giving to those to you. What we're mainly focusing on right now, on top of our regular conservation efforts, is working with large landscapes. So we're working with property managers, HOAs, and multi-housing, as well as the landscapers that are in charge of those sites to work out a plan where everyone can have a water budget that they're following, that they make irrigation repairs, that they know we are here to help them with rebates and with irrigation evaluations. We also are giving a lot of presentations to community groups. We have trainings where we are working with different manufacturers here in town or with nonprofits and holding workshops about water-wise landscaping, about irrigation, so that people have those education opportunities available to them. We also have additional hourly staff. As you can imagine, our phones have been ringing off the hook, which is something that we love, but we need more people to answer the phones. So we have an increased call volume. We have a much higher demand for water checkups and for rebates. Also, we have distributed these table tents that you can see on the screen and that you'll be seeing around town here. And we've distributed over 3,000 of those to local restaurants. The county also just placed an order, so you'll be seeing them in other places throughout the county. But here in the city, we've done 3,000 as well as the drought notices that are now required in restaurants. Also, in terms of lodging, we've distributed about 750 towel and linen cards as well as drought notices to hotels. And just to give you a perspective of how much the increase has been in our rebate, is last year, February through June, we had 55 pre-inspections. And this year, in the same time period, it tripled to 160. And the rebate now covers permeable landscaping materials such as cobblestones or artificial turf. So we've seen an increase in demand since we've expanded the program. We also are covering pool covers since we're now requiring those as of Stage 2 Water Use Regulations. So that's just a quick update on what we've been doing the past month. With our increased staff, we'll be able to shorten the wait time right now for water checkups and pre-inspections because we're booked out about a month since we have such a high demand. And of course, we're here on the website. And also, we've been getting a lot of phone calls in and reports on waste of water, which we always welcome. We ask that people take pictures of those and send them in to us so that we can help enforce that. We've been having, I think since February, we've had 300 complaints called in of waste of water. So we are happy to go out and talk to people about it.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Did you have a...
Yeah, I do actually have a question. So explain to me how the rebate program works in relation to folks who are conserving water now. Like say, because isn't there a relationship between how much, you know, what you're replacing? Do you have to have an active lawn? I guess is essentially what I'm asking. You know, we go down a few months, folks have turned off their water, their lawns are dead. They decide that at this point now, they're going to make the investment and they're going to take out their lawn and replace it and they're looking to take advantage of the rebate program. Is that going to cause a problem for them when they come to do that, if their lawn is dead?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, that's a great question. What we do is we actually look back at five years of water usage. So if someone watered their lawn consistently at any point in those five years, we can look back and see, okay, maybe last year you stopped watering your lawn, but you will still be approved for the rebate. But again, it does cover high water-using landscapes. So if you've always had water-wise plants and you've never watered them consistently, then it's generally not something that would be eligible. Maybe you had water-wise plants with spray irrigation, which isn't efficient, then it would just cover new drip irrigation that is more efficient, but not the plants. So it's really replacing things that are currently high water-using, even if you stopped watering your lawn, it would still be eligible.
Okay, good, thank you. That's really helpful.
Mr. White.
Thank you. How do we get a picture to you folks? In other words, there's email or text? Can we, is there, I mean, how do we do that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, we have a email, a group email that's, that we'll put on the slide for the future, which is Wconservation@santabarborca.gov. So water conservation, but water conservation's much longer. So it's Wconservation. And pictures really help because it'll tell us the date and the time and then we have proof to show property owners who generally aren't aware that their sprinklers are spraying in the middle of the day or running down the street. So it really helps to show pictures.
Okay, we do have some public comment speakers. And why don't we go with Phil Walker? And I think Mr. Shankman left, but Mr. Walker, come on up.
I think Councilman Hodgskis wanted to beat me. You can have my time if you want. Okay. City Resources staff, Mr. Hagmark and Ms. Ward gave an excellent update. Thinking back, okay, drought can be three years, 30, it can be 300. So, you know, this might be a moot point a few months from now. The way I read the El Nino, Dr. Patzert of JPL, a very noted meteorologist, follow him. They have a lot of articles in the LA Times about him and his prognostications. If I happen to go off the beach, Jason Stern's Wharf, and see, feel 80, 82, 84 degree water, you see the barracuda, the marlin, the yellowtail swimming out there, I'll go with a heavy, heavy rain here. If I don't feel that water temp increase in the ocean, uh-oh. Okay, one other quick thing, you know, I firmly see a need, I think the entities to the east, the Montecito Water District, see a need for the desalination plan if and necessary, you know? And there's such a symbiotic relationship, I've lived on the east side, good 40 years over there, between the working people on the east side and the maintenance of estates, landscape and other things, construction on, in Montecito proper, that economically, water is, or the lack thereof, is making it difficult on people, especially people on the east side. I'm getting little feedback here and there. And hopefully, a working agreement can be fleshed out with, especially the Montecito Water District, when and if the desalination plant gets put more into the, into fruition. Thank you very much.
And Kira Redman.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. Kira Redman with Santa Barbara Channel Keeper. Just had a couple of quick comments on the desalination option. Aside from being an extremely expensive and energy-intensive water supply option, as you know, it also has significant environmental impacts. As you know, Santa Barbara's desalination plant uses an open water-screened intake or will. And these types of technologies, basically, fish and other marine organisms get killed on the intake screens, that's called impingement. And organisms that are small enough to pass through, such as plankton, fish eggs, and larvae, are killed during the process, the processing of the saltwater, which is called entrainment. There are, however, several operational design and technological measures available to reduce the marine impacts of desalination. In particular, subsurface intakes can virtually eliminate impingement and entrainment. As was mentioned earlier, there is an imminent amendment to the California Ocean Plan, which will likely require these types of less environmentally harmful technologies. So, Channel Keeper, just to let you know, we'll be tracking and weighing in on this process and will be advocating for other, less expensive and less environmentally harmful water supply alternatives before the city resorts to desalination. And if you do decide to go that route, we will be urging you to undertake the most, the best available and least environmentally harmful technologies moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Shankman.
How water conservation is being managed, based on my observance, observations have led to me is some discrepancy. We have a history where we have put fresh groundwater telling the public that it's been reclaimed and it, the whole time, when it wasn't reclaimed. Now, we're adopting a policy to turn off fountains, ruining the construction of these vehicles to run water. In the process... In the process to save water, and even during times of blight, we would always have a water fountain running for, you know, to attract the birds, that eat the bugs, that cause diseases, and what have you. And that reevaluation in our policy, if we're going to stop water, lawn, or what have you, to keep the water fountains going in the process. Anybody have any questions to what I was just saying? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's to the council, if there are any other comments. Ms. Murillo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank staff, or as Grant House would say, appreciate staff for working so hard on our drought issue. I am concerned about the D-SAL plant as well, and before we talk about bonds and going out for proposals for design, we really should make a decision about the intake. And I share the concerns of one of our public speakers. Back in the 50s, when Bradbury Dam was built to create Lake Kachuma, there was a drought, and there was such an emergency, and arguments were made not to build a fish ladder on Bradbury Dam. And there's not a fish ladder on it, when fish ladders had been built on dams for, ever since dams were built, because people knew the fish travel up and down. I think I read that there was a fish ladder built on the dam, you know, early 1900s, late 1800s. So, that Steelhead Trout Fishery is essentially destroyed on the San Inos River, and regionally, it has impacts for us. The city of Lompoc, every person and community along the river now doesn't have that natural resource. So, here we are now, in our drought, and there's urgency, and I just would hope we don't make the mistake of doing, of building a desalination plant that harms marine life, even though there's momentum. So, I appreciate the situation we're in, but if you look long-term, you know, it will rain again, and I just hope that we make the right decision for, for the ocean environment. Thank you.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The desalination plant has been part of the city's water plans for decades, and given the fact that we don't have any other available sources of water, if the drought continues, then I feel pretty certain that we will use desalination. I think the concerns about the effect on marine life of this 36-inch screened pipe have been vastly overestimated, and obviously, I mean, if we could, if we could work it in such a way that the intake pipe only brought in water, that would be ideal. That's what we would like. We can't do that. Even with the best screens, there'll still be some, some fish larvae and some other microorganisms dragged in, but I think, I think we'll see, when we have more information on this, that the amount of marine life we're talking about is infinitesimally small, and the benefit to the city is correspondingly huge. So, I don't think it's going to be a problem. I don't think anyone will have any environmental concerns about this, if we actually come to do it, but we'll have more evidence about that later.
Well, I'm looking forward to that evidence.
You'll get it.
Right. And I, I know your position, and I just, I, you know, they've been looking at the screens that take in water on these nuclear power plants, and I, I think we need to do our research on the environmental impacts. Thank you.
Mr. Hodgkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, Mr. Hagmark, and this may be a little bit unfair, but in the news press, there was a rather extensive article about the success of Montecito in conservation, and I've said to people who've asked me that, because they had more fat on the bone, as it were, because we had done more of our homework in conserving here prior to this drought than Montecito. Am I correct, or is there additional matter, matters here that affect their current success?
So, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hodgkiss, yeah, we're closely with Montecito Water. In fact, we produce and treat a lot of their water for them. Their community is fairly small compared to the city of Santa Barbara. They're about 10,000 people. We're over 90,000. They use half the water the city uses for that a tenth of the population.
Their 10,000 uses half the water that our 90,000 uses?
That's correct. And so, in that, obviously, there is a significant amount of additional water. They, there's a lot of, they have large estates, and there's a lot of watering there, neither right or wrong. There is a lot of room for improvement, and they do not have the aggressive conservation program that we, we have here. And I think that has allowed them to see some pretty big savings. Now, the challenge that I think they're going to have is twofold. That comparison is to last year, not a normalized year, so that kind of gets them a little bit of a boost in looking even better, but sustaining that, I don't know how committed people are to letting their landscape go there, and I think that's what they're going to be kind of challenged with. And they've also got some really steep penalties put in there. I mean, people are paying, I think are, they're paying $35 in HCF, and we're up to $11 for our most expensive water, so they've got some pretty big fines in there to drive down their penalties, to drive down their water usage.
Well, hats off to them for whatever they can do. I'm glad they've done what they've done so far, and let's hope it continues. Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, to frame this a little bit, it's three years and two months ago that Kachuma spilled, and we've often spoken about our water supply as when Kachuma spills, we've got five years kind of pretty much in the bag. And maybe we do, but this, the water has dropped, the levels have dropped faster than ever before. And the charts that Mr. Hagmark showed us, that we used more water last year than we expected to, partly in response to hotter weather. And what was it, a few days ago, there was an op-ed piece in the, in the New York Times, which was Henry Paulson describing climate change as an issue. And I thought that was interesting, that perhaps a broader spectrum of our nation is looking at climate change as an issue that is, is one that we need to deal with. And I'll make copies of this and share this with, with everyone, but it's, it's definitely at the core of my thoughts here, that next year could be hotter, and, or it's more likely to be hotter even, that in the context of this climate change concern. Also, we've been talking about this since the beginning of the year. We've been talking about our, the drought, and about water concerns, and yet, we're, and we've set targets for reducing water use, and we're not hitting them. We're not hitting them one after the other, after the other, such that we've saved 150 acre-feet of water, and we were hoping to save 750 acre-feet of water by now, and we're now heading right into the teeth of our biggest water-consuming months. So, we haven't made the tools yet. We, it's not like we're, okay, we've got, we've got, we're in the cockpit, and it's, and we're, and we're on target. No, we're still off-target with our water consumption, and this concerns me greatly. And I've discussed in our last update, the concept of penalties, and I think there's a need for penalties. We certainly have high-water users in our city, and is it a tool that will get all the water conservation we need? Perhaps not, but I think it's one of the signals that we need to send, that high-water use is not okay. So, yeah, and I also think it will result in some meaningful conservation. I know we'll be hearing back from our council on this issue soon, and we can discuss that further. Also, I think we missed an opportunity in not having full cost recovery with our block-rate structure that we just went through the noticing process on. We just are, we were a little cautious there, and I'm disappointed that we didn't at least have the option to, as the way Prop 218 works, we have the, we have the option to get full cost recovery. And we could have had a steeper block-rate structure than we now have, which I believe is the strongest tool for conservation, is when people get a bigger bill, they modify their behavior. And we'll see, we have a modestly changing block-rate structure, and hopefully, we'll get some benefits of that. We're going to be depending more on our media to get the word out. This is not a dress rehearsal. We're, that 600 acre-feet that we didn't save, we just paid $600,000 for that water in supplemental, in supplemental purchases. So, that's just $600,000 down the proverbial drain that we don't have in our pockets. And I appreciate everybody's comments about, and I think this is on everybody's radar, we don't want to do the D-SAL unless we have to. And that that's something where every, you know, whether, whatever philosophy there is, you go, it's expensive, and we don't want expensive. And so, that 600 acre-feet of water is the equivalent of, you know, three weeks of this city's use. So, it's three weeks that we lost by not hitting those targets. So, I'm hoping that the penalties could be a one tool, perhaps, that will help us jolt back to getting on target for our, for our 20% savings that we're trying to get for the months of June to December. We need something to get, to make a stronger statement there. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Your point, Councilmember White's point, that Kachuma has dropped faster than we've ever seen before, is anything equivalent happening to groundwater supplies? Is anybody noticing that the levels are below where they would have been assumed to be? I think I've read somewhere that some of the other neighboring jurisdictions have issues like that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, we've pretty defined our largest being Storage Unit One, which this primary base downtown sits over. We are pretty much the, I think we are the only pumper in this basin, and so that basin is looking in really good shape. The Foothill Basin, which we also rely on, this underlies San Roque area, that basin is not in such a good shape. Lucumbre pulls out of that, there is a lot of private wells that pull out of that, and that, we are monitoring that, and that, that well is, the groundwater there is dropping quickly. So, we're keeping an eye on that. It probably won't be long before there's a lot of private wells that will go dry.
Okay. And then, to Councilmember White's point about the 1,000 acre-feet, or actually, I think you made this point, we need to save 1,000 acre-feet. That was what the goal was for this water year. Can you bring us some information about, you know, customers, and where that is breaking out? I think the Montecito Water District is doing very fine-grained analysis of large consumers, you know, compared to the average user. And I think in terms of the penalties that Councilmember White's talking about, we need to know, you know, where, what's, what's going on? Are we finding that there are some large customers who are immune to prices? Well, obviously, the effects of prices haven't even taken effect yet, so we don't know that. But is there a disproportionate amount of water that's being used by a relatively small number of people, or not people, perhaps institutions? You know, I can't, can't exactly see the same kind of scenario in the city of Santa Barbara that is, the Montecito Water District is struggling with, with large property owners using enormous amounts of water. But I want to make sure that nothing like that's happening, because I think, you know, the question we have to ask is, what is the sweet spot with the prices versus conservation? And if people, you know, lots and lots of people are conserving, and they're hitting the 20%, that's important information to know, that other people aren't doing anything. And, and we don't have any data about that. I don't know what you've been generating internally, but I think that's going to be increasingly important for us to understand where the consumers of water are. You know, are they large customers? Are they, everybody is basically not paid attention to the signals we've been sending? Those are completely different answers to the same question. Need to have some more information about that to make these decisions going forward. Thanks.
Thank you again for the update. I'll just add, just in terms of the conversation regarding the D-SAL, and I've said this before, I think there's a short-term and then a longer-term discussion about what this means in terms of our overall water supply. And the issue of an emergency use of the D-SAL plant, and the permitting, and the processing, and the contract, is one set of pieces of information, and I look forward to getting that data back, and, you know, when, when we hire the experts that you need to, to move that process forward, and so we can have full knowledge about what it is that we're looking at. But if we're looking at the D-SAL plant as a longer-term use after it rains for other reasons, that's a big policy decision to make, and I think certainly, a lot of the changes in the regulations are going to require that perhaps some of our intake processes may also have to change, if it's for a different type of use than an emergency type of use. And I think that context is important as we figure all this out, so. But again, thank you for constantly keeping us up to date, and I hope people are listening and doing everything they can to conserve what they can, so. Mr. Hart, did you have another question?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, so, let's move on to item number 15.
Appointments to city advisory groups.
Great. So, the way, we all know how this works up here, but just so I can explain it, first off, to thank all the applicants who have applied, and in a lot of cases, we have, oh, we have some speakers, so, okay, good, before we make any decisions, great. We'll have you speak in just a moment. Let me just explain this, and after you speak, we'll go through each of the committees. If there is, it's possible, if there is the same number of applicants as spots available, we can vote by acclamation, and if not, we can nominate, nominate applicants, and if there are more applicants than spots available, then we'll go through a roll call and vote to see who, who gets appointed, and go from there. So, but first, we'll have members of our youth council here, Jacqueline Cabral and Pablo Saleta, come on up, and thank you for your service on the youth council. Go ahead, ahead.
Hi, Madam Mayor and city councilmembers. I am Pablo Saleta, and I am vice chair of the Santa Barbara Youth Council, and I am here with...
I'm Jacqueline Cabral, and I'm second vice chair of the youth council. First of all, we'd like to thank you guys for allowing us to be part of the process. It's been great. We've had many great interviews, and we came up with really good nominations for the positions. But first of all, we'd like to clarify the Dos Pueblos nomination. Due to staff confusion, we gave you guys the wrong recommendation, so the youth council would like to recommend Zanob North Shore for the Dos Pueblos nomination. And our nominations were not only based off of leadership potential, but also diversity. So, we looked at ethnicity, age, gender, availability, and the balance between county and the city.
So, each of these factors, we believe, is hugely important to being a Santa Barbara Youth Council member, and we really need all of the people to be readily available to serve our council. In the past, we have had problems with that, which is why we look at everyone and the amount of work that they did. So, we don't want our body to be hindered by people who do not show up, and in taking a step towards that, we have decided to nominate one such member, who has already started to come to our meetings and our events. So, due to the fact that we're a commission of high school students, we must consider the factor of age, and next year, we have seven graduating seniors, which, as you could see, would be a really big problem to the commission and really to our entire advisory board. We have had to deal with this such problem last year, when we had seven graduating seniors leaving us with three experienced members, and we don't want to have that problem again. So, once again, we'd like to thank you so much for allowing us to be part of this process, and thank you.
Thank you very much, and again, thank you for your service. Okay. All right, so, let's go through the process. We'll start with the access advisory committee.
Nominate Barnwell by acclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there's no one for arts advisory?
Okay. There's no one for Arts Advisory. On to the Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals, and there are two vacancies and three applicants. So, are there any nominations?
Nominate... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Nominate Bonnie Elliott and Ken McClellan.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Karen Johnson.
Okay, so if we can have a roll call, and you can vote for two. Councilmember Francisco?
Elliott and McClellan.
Hart?
Elliott Johnson.
Elliott and McClellan.
Mario?
Elliott Johnson.
Rouse?
Elliott McClellan.
White?
Elliott Johnson.
Mayor Schneider? Elliott McClellan. So, it looks like it's Elliott and McClellan. They got four votes or more, right? Okay. Central Coast Commission for Senior Citizens?
Acclamations, Gaffidi.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Community Development and Human Services Committee?
Yodishian Orchowski by acclamation.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Community Events and Festivals?
Brad Knack by acclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There was no one for the Fire and Police Pension Commission. Okay, Harbor Commission, we have three applicants and two vacancies. So, any nominations?
Nominate...
Bantalan and McIntosh. Excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I'm sorry.
Bantalan and McIntosh. Any other nominations?
Rincon Ibarra, please.
Okay, if we can have a roll call. You can vote for two. I'm sorry, I voted for two. Councilmember Hart?
Banzalan McIntosh.
Hotchkiss?
Bantalan McIntosh.
Mario?
McIntosh Rincon Ibarra.
Rouse?
Bantalan McIntosh.
White?
Bantalan McIntosh.
Mayor Schneider? Bantalan McIntosh. And Councilmember Francisco?
Bantalan Rincon Ibarra.
I think we got Bantalan and McIntosh. Okay.
You're fast at that.
Well, I practiced it. Housing Authority Commission, we have two applicants for each of the, one applicant for each of the categories.
Daniel and Olson by acclamation.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Living Wage Advisory Committee?
Dominicello by acclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there was, Measure P Committee people. But move on to the Mosquito and Vector Management District Board. There's one vacancy and two applicants.
Fawcett.
Any other nominations? Okay, is there a motion for Fawcett?
There is.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Parks and Recreation Commission, this is, we have five very great applicants, for all listening, and two vacancies. So, are there any nominations?
May I? Clark Rincon Ibarra.
Okay, any other nominations?
Rocky Jacobson.
Any other nominations?
And John Abramey.
Okay.
Carolyn Brown.
All right, well, that's, all right, there we go. Let's have a roll call. Please, vote for two. Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Jacobson, and I'm going to switch now to Brown, please. Jacobson and Brown.
Okay. Councilmember Mario?
Clark Rincon Ibarra.
Rouse?
Abramey Clark.
White?
Brown Clark.
Mayor Schneider?
Jacobson Clark.
Councilmember Francisco?
Abramey Brown.
And Hart?
Rincon Ibarra and Clark.
Okay, so Clark got nominated, and we don't have four votes for any of the others. So, we could do another round and just vote for one. Don't vote for Clark, she already got it. Okay. Councilmember Mario?
I can vote for just one.
Just one.
Rincon Ibarra, please.
Rouse?
Brown.
White?
Brown.
Mayor Schneider? Brown. Francisco?
Brown.
Hart?
Rincon Ibarra.
Hotchkiss?
Brown.
Okay, so Brown. Got it. So, the two are Nicole Clark and Carolyn Brown. Okay. None for Rental Housing Mediation Task Force. On to the youth council, so we'll start...
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go right ahead.
May I nominate the youth council recommendation with the correction of today? So that would be Camille Cosio for Member-at-Large, Catherine Correo for Private School, Scott Vulgaris for San Marcos High School, and Zainab Norsher for Dos Pueblos High School.
Okay, so if we did that, then there are two from San Marcos High School, but one of those could be considered the at-large position.
Right, Cosio is nominated by the youth council as the member-at-large.
Okay. So, let me just first ask if there are any other nominations. If not, we can just vote by acclamation with the numbers here.
Jane, ah, Jane, Dos Pueblos.
From DP? Jane? Okay. Okay. So, any other nominations for any category at this point?
Madam Mayor, who were the nominations again, please?
The youth council recommendations were, for San Marcos High School, Camille Cosio and Scott Vulgaris. From DP, the youth council recommendation was Norsher, and then there was an additional nomination for Jane. And then, actually, we could probably vote in by acclamation Catherine Correo, because there's, she's in a local private high school category, and she's the only one in that category.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so why don't we just, so what we're doing is just doing Catherine Correo for the local private high school piece here, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now there's three spots available. One...
I nominate Camille Cosio for the at-large, and Scott Vulgaris for San Marcos.
Well, I think, okay.
Repeat that, I didn't hear.
Right. I nominate Camille Cosio for the at-large position, and Scott Vulgaris for the San Marcos.
A second?
Well, the at-large, well, the at-large could be anybody. So, this is what I would suggest. We have two, we have two from San Marcos, two from DP, and one slot for each. Why don't we find out which one is from DP and which one from San Marcos, and then whichever's left, there'll be two left over, and then we can vote on the at-large one. Does that make, I'm trying to be as fair as possible here.
I don't know, we had a motion and a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so...
Repeat the motion, please.
The motion is Camille Cosio for the at-large, and Scott Vulgaris for the student from San Marcos High School. Okay, that's the motion? All right, all in favor?
And I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, then clarify, the youth council advocacy is for...
That would match what the youth council recommendation is. And then, if this passes, what we would do, there are two nominations for DP, and we would just vote on which one of those two.
Okay.
Okay? So we know what the motion is? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so we have two nominations for Dos Pueblos High School, Jane and Norsher. Any other nominations, just to be sure, just for DP? Okay, so if we could have a vote on either Jane or Norsher. Councilmember Rouse?
Norsher.
White?
Norsher.
Schneider?
Norsher.
Francisco?
Norsher.
Hart?
Norsher.
And Hotchkiss?
Jane.
Mario?
Norsher.
Okay, Norsher, got it. Okay, thank you. That was, they, thank you for your work there too, with your help. Single Family Design Board?
Move acclamation Zimmerman and Miller.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All righty, that's all of them.
We have a winner.
All right, we have one more item. Item number 16.
Appointment of council members to an ad hoc committee on district elections.
Okay, I don't think there's a staff report for this, because this is a follow-up from the work session we had a few weeks ago. We do have a couple of speaker slips, but first, let me just ask if there are any questions, or should we just go to the public comment?
I'm ready to make a nomination.
Oh, why don't we have...
We should wait.
We should wait for public comments. So, Cruzito Herrera Cruz, and then Bonnie Raison.
Good afternoon. Buenas tardes a todos. Yo me llamo Cruzito Herrera Cruz. Aquí estoy enfrente del alcalde y los concilios de Santa Barbara. Estoy aquí porque estamos abajo del California Voting Rights Act, que los tiene que proteger a los votantes en la ciudad de Santa Barbara, porque ya somos 50% de la población. Good afternoon. My name is Cruzito Cruz. I will be a candidate for this upcoming election as a city council candidate, so no speculation out there. I will be putting my hat in the wringer. We're here because of California Voting Rights Act, and the protections of a protected class under 42 USC 1973, also the Voting Rights Act of 1965, also the California Voting Rights Act and the Constitution. We're talking about the due process clause, integrity of the elections, and outcome, to have political policies reflective of the community's needs. After many years, I used to say it's racially polarized, but I have learned a new coin. We're not necessarily about race. It's about really community representation on the east side and west side. Because in all the communities, in all the districts of Santa Barbara, we're a multicultural society, and this is where the last place on earth, where the whole world is going to meet. So, in that circumstance, we still need to address the fact that we have political policies that are not reflective, or conducive, or healthy for the community. That's why district-based elections, I stand with the Committee for District-Based Elections and Community Neighborhood Alliance, in solidarity with them. In considering this body to legislate and not take it to a ballot, the city council could take the leadership and the majority, supermajority can legislate this from the council, the six districts, one at-large, mayor elections. You can take the leadership for that. Hopefully, we could take that road. And if not, I thank you for listening to me. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Six-one model, California Voting Rights Act.
Bonnie Raison?
Good afternoon. I had not planned to say anything. I just want to make sure that the public is aware, if you're going to have an ad hoc committee, that they are aware that the voters had a chance to vote in district elections some 20-odd years ago, and that it did not lose by much. I think it's important to go back to the basics of explaining to your constituents just what district elections is, and what it would mean for safety and welfare, and the maintenance of our infrastructure. I am really concerned. I was pleased to see that Major M, which I know is not a city concern, really narrowly, was defeated in the last results, in the last resolve of the elections. And I am concerned for the city of Santa Barbara, which I am more than a couple of generations strong here, that we have ignored some of the very basics at the expense of healthy infrastructure. We've spent money on lovely tourist areas and neighborhood wish lists for roundabouts, and I'm not questioning that, I don't want to debate that now. But I think that each, supposedly maybe 13,000 people, and each six districts, and a mayor at large, I believe that, number one, it would be easier and much less expensive for more people to run for office. I am not a candidate, but I am expressing that view. And I also think that they would then be able to have their door open and their phone line on for any criticism or compliments that they might want to give their representative, representing such a small group of people all over the city. I'm really tired of the way there are special interests regarding many things in this city. I'm not talking about a racial issue now. I'm talking about the practicalities. There are areas at the touristy that look lovely. There are areas in the Upper East that look lovely, and then there are areas downtown, on the east and west side, that don't look so lovely. Why? You know, why is this?
Wind up, please.
Okay, I hadn't meant to even speak this much, but I was here, and I, I'm very interested in how you handle this, you know, in an open forum, and to educate the people about what it would mean. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's to the council. Ms. Mario, you seem itching to do something here, so go right ahead.
Well, I wanted to, first of all, thank Mayor Schneider and Councilmember White for showing the leadership a couple of months ago to introduce this topic to our council and to our city. And we have been watching what's been going on statewide, and I know as a candidate, so I know all of you as a candidate, that was always one of the forum questions, where do you stand on district elections? So, we've done a lot of thinking about it, and we've thought about the pros and the cons. And I'm just really pleased to see that the conversation is continuing, and that the public is engaged. And Ms. Raison has brought in, what is it going to mean to infrastructure, to the neighborhoods? It really matters who is elected up here. So, I'd like to nominate myself, first of all, for the ad hoc committee, but also Mayor Schneider and Councilmember Rouse. I think, I've been thinking about the combination, and I think we would make a good trio of people to interact with the community and discuss these issues, and come up with positive, a positive direction.
What do you think of that, Mr. Rouse? You've been nominated.
I've been nominated. I've been, I'm just, I'm so honored. I'm fine with that, actually.
Okay. I'm fine with it.
I don't know about the rest of my colleagues, if there's a desire.
I want to ask my colleagues, was there anyone else itching to be on this ad hoc committee, or we heard Ms. Mario's thoughts? Or go for it?
All yours.
Okay. All right, so I'll take, was that a motion?
Second.
The motion.
And second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I do want to just say out loud something that's in the staff report, is that, the other thing that we asked at that work session was for staff to come back with a report regarding, to have a demographer come in on issues relating to the California Voting Rights Act, and that report will be presented to the council on July 22nd at our council meeting then, so you can mark your calendars. Okay, thank you. Any council member committee assignment reports? Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had two really interesting things. The first was from the airport. They're in the final steps of negotiating an extensive solar array contract, which will provide, get this, this is really cool, 80% of electricity needed for the new terminal. And originally, they had taken a look at it, could not figure out how to make it work financially for them. This time, they went around, went out with a proposal that would be, bring no cost of construction to the airport. It's called a power purchase agreement, where a third party plans, finances, permits, builds, owns, and operates the system in exchange for which the airport agrees to buy back all the power at a fixed rate for an extended contract. That's the only liability. I think there was their 20 years. And once they get an agreement, they're in final negotiations, as I said, it'll be about two years before the project is realized. Second thing, oh, by the way, also for the airport, if you park at the airport now, you'll receive a free coupon for a medium cup of coffee, which is really important to me, as you know. I also visited the, we voted, I think, $16,000 last session to supplement Parks and Free Breakfast Program. So, I went there yesterday at Franklin. I want to report that it was very successful. All the kids look fit, nobody's starving there, quite popular, and I think really, maybe 150 kids there, well-fed and happy.
All right. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the SB CAG and APCD meetings. I'll be substituting for you. That was last Thursday. And all we did was pass annual budgets. And one interesting additional piece was the, Mr. Kemp discussing the appointment of a corridor advisor for the Highway 101 project. So, that's a person of great moment to assist in, to guide the effort of getting that project going yet more. Another piece was the performance review of Mr. Kemp and a decision to offer him an extension of his contract. And finally, at APCD, there was one interesting piece, which is a pilot project to reduce the speed of vessels going through the channel, which I thought was kind of interesting. And the figures that were shared were that dropping the speed to 12 knots... And the figures that were shared were that dropping the speed to 12 knots, they're going to do it with a sample number of ships, drops the pollution levels by 50%. And the tonnage was very impressive as far as just how much pollution can be reduced if that can be moving forward. So, I learned a lot and hopefully didn't do too much damage while I was representing the city on that.
Thank you for being my alternate last week. I think the other thing about the reducing the speed of the tankers, it also reduces the fatalities of whale strikes, which is a big deal in the channel, especially for us.
And sailboat strikes.
And sailboat strikes? Yeah, we don't like sailboat strikes. Well, and it's the... That kind of traffic, I think, contributes 40% of our greenhouse gas emissions or the NOx that come. It's a huge amount of that we experience. So, thank you for being there on my behalf. Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hachkis, and I attended a meeting of the neighborhood stakeholders about State Street and security. And Chief Cam Sanchez was there as well. And I think the general consensus was everybody was very pleased with the progress and the effort put forth by our police department especially, and talking about upcoming plans.